Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Riska. Can we please have the roll call tonight?
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Saroski?
Here.
Mrs. Kosky?
Present.
Mr. Radke?
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Present.
Mr. Shannon?
Present.
Mrs. Arco?
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of housekeeping items to start off with. First, an observance of Thanksgiving holiday. This week will be closed on Thursday and Friday, so that means our refuse collection schedule will be delayed one day. So, collection on Thursday will be on Friday, and Friday will be on Saturday, so please take note. Also, our yard waste collection will be ending December 3rd. I should say the week of December 3rd through the 7th, so that really only gives you two more weekends to get all your leaves raked up. So again, officially, the last day will be December 7th. And also, Sterling Christmas, our 42nd A. Sterling Christmas will be held on Saturday, December 1st, and that will be from 5:45 to 8:30 PM at Dodge Park. The most exciting part of this year's event will be the dedication of the new ice rink. I'm pleased to say that the boards are up. The ice is almost ready. The Zamboni's been delivered, and it's going to be a wonderful kickoff. We really look forward to having the ice rink as part of this year's festivities. And of course, we'll have all the other events too, including tree lighting, holiday music, and caroling, visits with Santa, horse-drawn carriage or wagon rides, and much more. And in addition, we do ask those who participate, and we have thousands of people who participate every year, that you bring boxed food or canned food that will be donating to various shelters. And we look forward to seeing everyone. Again, that's December 1st. And I really do not like talking about this next topic, but I must do so, and it pertains to snow emergencies. So please be reminded during the winter months, and we can have an emergency, as you know, anytime now with a snow event, that we could be in a snow emergency. And you can tune into our website. I would strongly urge residents to sign up to our listserv. You can go to our website and do that. And anytime there is a snow emergency, you'll get an alert right to your smartphone. What it means when there is a snow emergency, though, you have two hours to remove your vehicles from the road and get them parked in your driveways or elsewhere, so that our emergency vehicles can get through, and the snow plows can get through, and get everything cleaned up. And even though the plows have passed, you still have to keep the cars off the roads during the entire snow emergency. We do issue hundreds of tickets every snow emergency. Unfortunately, we even have to tow vehicles, but the vast majority of the community does comply, and we certainly appreciate that. And also a reminder too, when there is a snow event, sidewalks have to be cleared. We often give 24-hour, we must give 24-hour notice to clear your sidewalk, and if you don't, we are able to then clear with our contractor. But unfortunately, we then have to bill homeowners for that. So, again, keep in mind that you do have to clear your sidewalks as well. And also, please keep in mind that we still have the on-demand snow removal service. So, if you're not able to do your driveway on your own, or you don't want to contract with a vendor for the entire winter, you can choose the on-demand service as needed. You can use it once, three times, five, however many times you need it. It's called Lawn Guru. You can simply go to our website or Google the app and download it to your smartphone, so you're ready to go no matter where you are. As long as you have internet connection, you can have your driveway and sidewalks cleared this winter. All right. In addition, I wanted to switch from talking about sort of a dreaded topic of snow clearing to something a little more pleasant, if I can draw your eyes to the screen. We're very pleased to announce that our landings, thanks to the city council's approval at a recent meeting, have the purchase of two of these canoe kayak landings. Now, you can see here that one at Clint, North Clinton River Park has been installed. It's going to work great. These are handicap accessible, and so you can launch kayaks and land kayaks from these locations. One will be at North Clinton River Park, the other will be down at Rotary Park. So again, this makes our Clinton River all seven-plus miles in our city that much more enjoyable and accessible, including those who have handicapped, handicap mobilities. So we actually installed this just to test it. We'll be taking it out of the water very soon, but I'm happy to say that both of these will be fully operational as soon as the weather breaks next spring. So, moving back to my presentation, I have a quick update on a major manufacturer, which is AGS Automotive. Many of you may know that they've recently announced a $5 million investment in their facility in Sterling Heights. Best of all, they're going to be adding 100 new employees to their organization, again, based in our city. And as part of their package, incentive package, if you will, although they are not getting any tax abatement incentives for their investment, however, the city did agree to develop a promotional video for their job fair that's coming up. So I wanted to take just a couple of minutes to show everyone the promotional video, and for those at home in the audience that may know individuals interested in a full-time job with AGS, the job fair is your opportunity.
AGS Automotive Systems is hosting a job fair at Velocity on December 6th from 10 to 4 PM. Are you a positive, motivated, and hard-working individual looking for opportunities in the auto industry? Well, now is your chance to work for a growing international automotive supplier, AGS Automotive Systems.
AGS is an amazing place to work in.
The more time I spend here, more I like it.
They are really good. They care if you are like good worker, hard worker. They always give you a good position when they see like you are a good worker.
We are always united as a family. We are doing amazing. We get it done.
Our reputation for delivering high-quality, high-value products to our customers has led to our growth.
A lot of positions are open right now, so if you work really hard and you work good, there is positions that they're open, they're looking for good people. There's a lot of opportunities.
Now, we're looking to add exceptional individuals to our team. General laborers, forklift drivers, shipping and receiving clerks, junior solution techs, production supervisors, manufacturing engineers, a quality engineer, and material planner. Our team is growing, and you can be part of it. Come to our job fair at Velocity at 6633 18 Mile Road on Thursday, December 6th from 10 to 4 PM. Our HR staff will be on hand to meet, greet, and do on-the-spot interviews with interested job seekers.
So whoever's looking for a job, come to AGS. They'll take care of you. They'll hire you. They'll teach you everything. They'll go through every single thing with you. Try it on.
Work for a growing international automotive supplier, AGS Automotive Systems.
You can see from just this one investment alone, the number of jobs that are created. We're so fortunate in Sterling Heights, the automotive industry continues to invest billions of dollars in our city. FCA's one example, Ford's another, AGS is another, Mitchell Plastics another, so we're very blessed in the community. In fact, we're going to be hearing later from Jim Reel's Friendly Automotive Group, and the auto dealers in our city and around our city also have a huge impact on investments and benefits to the communities region-wide as well. So, if you're interested, the job fair is available. For more information, you can certainly go to our website as well to get more details. And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. We will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a presentation to acknowledge and accept the generous donation of K-9 bullet-resistant vests and a monetary donation for new K-9 Training Tough Shed. A presentation from our police chief, Chief Dale Dwojekowski. Chief?
Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpool, thank you very much. As you know, we retired our K-9 Chase last week on Friday after 10 years of diligent service. We're fortunate and blessed to have three brand-new dogs to the city K-9 units, and once we announced these dogs, we had residents coming out of the woodworks wanting to buy equipment for them, training equipment for them, and bulletproof vests for them. So tonight, I'd like to honor three groups that are purchasing bullet-resistant vests for our three new K-9s, and another businessman and automotive dealer, Jim Reel, Friendly Automotive, who also is purchasing a large building for us on our K-9 training ground. So we're going to be doing all of those tonight. I'm going to start off with Officer Wallman and Ernie, if you could come on up here. And we're going to have Raymond Cavallari. Is he here, Raymond? Want to stand over here? And let me get this certificate. Here you go, Jeremy. This is for Raymond. And here's the challenge. This is Officer Wallman with K-9 Ernie. His vest is being donated by Michigan Computer Solutions located in Sterling Heights. Raymond Cavallari, which is right there. Raymond, say hello to everyone. Thank you, Raymond. They're donating the vest in the honor of close friend Bill Shuttleworth, who passed away in March of 2018. In 1982, Bill worked closely with the Sterling Heights Police Department for the purpose of starting a K-9 unit in Oak Park. The K-9 unit was able to be established with Bill's efforts, and he retired as a K-9 officer from Oak Park. Computer Solutions has extended invitation, and we're very pleased that you came on here tonight, and we're pleased that you're willing to buy this vest. So thank you very much. If you just want to stay up here, and we'll honor everyone, we have council come down and shake everyone's hand, but thank you so much. We have a round of applause for Raymond. Thank you. If I can have Officer Brothen up here with Groot. Is, did Don and Pat McFarland, did they make it? Come on up, folks. Again, Officer Groot's vest is being donated by Don and Pat McFarland. Thank you guys so much. Very nice, you guys. They're donating the vest in honor of their sister, Deanna Sadlowski, who passed away in February of this year. Deanna was a longtime resident of Sterling Heights, and she loved living here in Sterling Heights, so thank you. You guys are what makes Sterling Heights a great place to live, work, and play, and that dog is going to really appreciate that vest, so thank you very much. Give a round of applause. And if we can have Officer Steele up here with Ivy. And if I can have Maureen Holston come on up here, and the crew from Serenity Animal Hospital, if you guys want to come up here as well. Ivy was our first, and as soon as they, all this, the entire bunch heard about Ivy, several things happened. Maureen, to our left, Maureen Holston, resident of Sterling Heights, decided to have a fundraiser for Ivy, and she raised over $1,000 towards Ivy's vest. Thank you very, very much. And when Serenity Animal Hospital heard about this, they got involved as well, and they raised $2,900 for Ivy and for animal equipment, K-9 equipment, that we'll utilize for all three of our dogs. So, Serenity Animal Hospital, you guys have been great with us. We take our dogs there. We really appreciate your care and taking care of these K-9s. And Maureen, thank you so much for stepping up out of the blue and just doing that out of the goodness of your heart. We really, really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, if I can have Jim and Janet Reel come on up here, if your son's, daughter's, family, whoever you guys want to come on up. The Reel family's all here. I had a call from Brad Kirsten, who's the chief in Chesterfield Township, and he said, "Hey, do you guys need anything for your K-9 unit?" I said, "Why?" He said, "Jim Reel and his wife are huge K-9 fans, and they want to buy a dog." I said, "We just bought two dogs." And I said, "But we have a K-9 training facility in Sterling Heights at Baumgartner Park, and if you don't know, Sterling Heights is a regional trainer for a lot of departments. Anywhere between five and 10 departments come here to Sterling Heights every Wednesday and train on the field at the back of Baumgartner Park. We have a full agility course. We have a building back there that is completely decrepit. A tree has grown through the middle of it. It's a building for storage and for searches, and we use it all the time. The building needs to go." So I told Jim, I said, "Hey, we need a new building back there." He said, "Well, shoot me a price. Tell me what you need." I said, "$1,000." He responded, I think, within 30 minutes. He said, "Done, deal. Check was in hand." So Jim and Janet Reel and the fine folks at Friendly Automotive, we cannot thank you enough for your support. $1,000, and we have a check here. If we can take a picture of your donation, and we're going to put it to good use. Counsel, if you'd like to come down and say thank you, I'd appreciate it. You guys want to stay up here? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
We have to see everybody anyway.
Chief.
Chief.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it so much. Yeah.
Counsel, if you'd like to come down and say thank you, I'd appreciate it. You guys want to stay up here? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
We have to see everybody anyway.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Hey, Chief.
Chief.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it so much. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Counsel, if you'd like to come down and say thank you, I'd appreciate it. You guys want to stay up here? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
We have to see everybody anyway.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Hey, Chief.
Chief.
Thank you very much. Very good.
Thank you so much.
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 Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt.
Mrs. Saroski?
Yeah, just very briefly, I'm in the process with Mrs. Kosky of doing the Citizens Police Academy, and every week, one of our classmates who loves dogs keeps asking either the police officers or even us, "When are we getting vests for our dogs?" So now finally, she'll be very happy, and I want to thank you all for helping out with that, but also glad to have these dogs. I'm a grandmother to a dog who is a retired military police dog, so they're wonderful animals, and they do keep us safe in many different ways, so thank you guys for all your help.
Thank you, Mrs. Saroski. Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
I just want to let the chief know that I'm going to be working on dog number four.
Why not just go with five, too?
She's never happy. Never enough.
No, four will do it.
Four's enough, okay.
Four is fine.
Anyone else, Counsel? Well, I, just to wrap that portion up, want to thank the generosity of the Reels and Well, I just to wrap that portion up, want to thank the generosity of the Reels and of everyone else who contributed to the, the dog vests. Obviously, it's a topical issue with what happened in St. Clair Shores, a very tragic event and, you know, our police dogs are such a vital part of what we do in the police department and as I said in my State of the City address earlier this year, there is a lot we can do to innovate, to make the police department, you know, innovative and better and make our residents safer, but what the dogs do really can't be replicated by humans or computers or machines or anything yet and they're such a unique tool that, that really help keep the residents of our city safe and these dogs, they, you know, they don't, they don't volunteer for this per se, right? They could live a, a pretty comfortable life and so to, to do everything we can to make sure that they return home safe to their handlers every night is, is really awesome and for the community to step up and do that, you're doing a great job and, and makes us all proud, so thank you very much for that. So without any further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is another presentation. Chief Wojcicki, why don't you come back? This is a swearing in ceremony for our new Sterling Heights police officers.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpoel, if we could have our four new officers assume your position on the floor here. Uh, these four new officers were hired on November 5th and it, I am, there's a lot of pride here because this is the first time since 2009 we are at full staffing. We now have officially 117 police officers and that is coming out of a recession when we got really, really thin, then we went through a mass retirement over the last four years and it's taken to this point tonight, this week, and we're finally, I'm very proud to say it, at full staffing, 117 police officers. So I'm ecstatic, the guys in the road are ecstatic, to be at full numbers and again, we hit it out of the park with, with this group of candidates. Again, Sterling Heights is a destination police department, they come here from across the state of Michigan, which means once you get hired by Sterling Heights, they don't retire, they don't leave, there's no place to go. I can't remember the last officer that left here and became a police officer somewhere else, but yet most of these officers and most of our officers that work for us all came from another department and they will retire from Sterling Heights. Why? Because in my honest opinion, we have the best police department in the state of Michigan, one of the best police agencies around and they stay. So without further ado, I want to introduce Cameron Masajewski. No, Machieski. Yeah, see, I'm Wojcicki, you should get this right. Officer Masieski is married, no children, a second lieutenant platoon leader in the United States Army Reserve, a recent graduate of the Michigan State, of Michigan State University with a Bachelor's of Arts in Criminal Justice, Cameron, and Edward Talia. Edward is a Sterling Heights resident, married with no children, he was born in Iraq. Officer Talia comes to us from the Waterford Police Department and he's a graduate of Macomb Community College and Officer Tyler Wilson comes to us from the Clinton Township Police Department, we poached this one from right next door. So Officer, Chief Posovitch was not too happy, but that's where she came from, formerly with the Detroit Police Department where she was, started her job in 2013 with Detroit and Officer Wilson was recently married to our officer Jesse Wilson who's here tonight and then Officer Nathan Perez. Nathan comes from a very, very far distance, our jail, not that he was a prisoner there, he worked in our jail for our contract security, so every single officer in our building knows Nathan very, very well. He did many years for us as a G for us, a security person in our jail. He is a Sterling Heights resident and he, like I said, worked in our jail facility since 2014, so he knows our system inside and out and our officers are very familiar with them. He's a graduate of Western University of Michigan, Western Michigan University, has a Bachelor's of Arts in Criminal Justice and Psychology. So without any delay, let me get my... There it is, I'm sorry.
Think you'd have it memorized by now, Chief.
I state your name.
I, Edward Talia.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that of the state of Michigan?
And that of the state of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer?
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer.
In and for the city of Sterling Heights?
In and for the city of Sterling Heights.
And that I will strive to maintain the highest standards of that department?
And I will strive to maintain the highest standards of that department.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations, Mr. Chief. All right, Cameron, if you want to come up here and say a few words, the mic's all yours.
Mayor Taylor, Mr. Vanderpoel, council members, I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to serve this community, I'm very excited, this will definitely be a destination job for me, it's my first actual career, I've been doing normal young person jobs, I'm only 24 years old, freshly turned 24, but I'm very excited, look forward to serving this community, thank you.
Thank you.
Edward, come on up.
Mayor, city manager, council members, my family, thank you guys for the opportunity, thank you for the support, I look forward to serving the citizens of Sterling Heights and I love living in the city as well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tyler?
Good evening, to all the council members and the mayor, I would like to truly thank you for this opportunity, it's been a goal of mine to be, be here for about five years when I started becoming a police officer, so I'm super thankful that you guys gave me this opportunity to join the family. I would also like to thank my father, who's been a police officer for 30 years, he has inspired me to do this job, so without him, I wouldn't be here today and I'd also like to thank my husband and my family for their support because I also would not be here today without them, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, mayor, city manager, city council, and everyone that came, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity, for the support shown here and I'd also like to thank the police department for the support of the entire process while I was working in the jail, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite city council, come on down and say hello and officially introduce yourself.
Are they regulation?
I'm sure they are.
Yes. All right, council, anyone have anything they'd like to say to our new police officers? Open it up.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Well, I want to congratulate you all and thank you and although I hate to single out our female officer, I think we should notice that she has pink handcuffs. So I, that is fantastic and I want, as, as another woman, of course, the more women the merrier, but gentlemen, I know that you guys are gonna, and Ms. Taylor, we're so proud of you and we're proud to have you and we thank you, especially those, you know, that have lived in Sterling Heights and want to stay here, that makes us feel like we're finally, we're doing a great job and we're going places and we want you to stay here however, so thank you guys for being here.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski and you know, my wife has mentioned, has noticed before, they have these Tiffany blue handguns, so I don't know if that's a...
Oh, that's your next one.
That's, that's might not be, that might not be police issue, but anyone else, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
I just want to congratulate our new police officers, you know, the, the chief says we have 117 patrol officers now and we have 151 total officers in the city, we're continuing to grow and I hope that you might consider making a home here, not just working here in the city, but planning your roots here because I think you'll never find a better city to live in or work in Sterling Heights, so congratulations and welcome.
Council, anyone else? Uh, if not, I just want to be the last to welcome you at this ceremony and wish you well, thank you for your, your service to the city of Sterling Heights, it's always good to see new officers sworn in and usually they come from families that have a background in police service or they've come from other departments and know the reputation that we have and we look to you to uphold that reputation because it's, it's really, you know, our, our continued reputation as one of the best departments in the state of Michigan, for better or worse, falls on your shoulders now and so we have very high expectations, but you'll find that this city, the residents and the council and the administration and the police administration is gonna, they're, we're gonna all do everything we can to make your job as easy as possible, we know it's stressful and difficult, but we've got your back because we know you've got ours, so thank you for your service and good luck out there, stay safe, God bless, Godspeed and let's give these officers one more big round of applause. Thank you very much, you can go on with them.
Unless you want to stay with us.
You can, or you can stay.
Yeah.
For the next 25 years.
It's about to get interesting, I think. Okay, we will move on to the next item on our agenda and this is an ordinance introduction and this is to introduce an ordinance amending the city code to prohibit recreational marijuana establishments within the city pursuant to the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act of 2018. We have a presentation from our assistant city attorney, Don Denault, Mr. Denault.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, members of council, good to see everybody this evening. We are here tonight to talk about a, probably the shortest ordinance that we've ever written for the city, but it's something that we felt was appropriate and important to bring to your attention this evening. As everybody knows, on November 6th, the voters of the state of Michigan approved Proposal One, as it's known, the formal name of that is the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, so when I talk about the act, I'm talking about Proposal One. The act, what does it do? It authorizes and legalizes, in a sense, the recreational possession, use, and cultivation of marijuana and marijuana products by individuals who are at least 21 years old. It also authorizes commercial sales of recreational marijuana through state licensed retailers and it authorizes the state to license a variety of marijuana establishments. If this sounds familiar, it's because I've spoken with you before about medical marijuana facilities, these marijuana establishments have the same name, grower, safety compliance facility, processor, retailer, secure transporter, and also a new category known as microbusinesses. However, the act also gives us the opportunity as a community to affirmatively either prohibit marijuana establishments or restrict them. Unlike the Medical Marijuana Facilities Act that we've talked about before, which required us to opt in if we wanted to be part of it, this act was written in reverse, this act was written to say that we have the right, if we choose, to opt out of allowing the facilities in the community. So what does that mean? Well, instead of being out unless we opt in, we are in unless we opt out and being in means that any property in the city of Sterling Heights, regardless of its zoning, regardless of any lack of ordinance regulations that we may have on the books, can apply to the state for a marijuana establishment license. By contrast, if we talk about the Medical Marijuana Act, communities could just do nothing and a facility could not go to the state and ask for a license. So we, the administration, police department, city attorneys, and municipal attorneys throughout the state believe that the opt-out requirement was probably an intentional design of the writers, it was designed to enable establishments to obtain state licensing in any community that has not acted to prohibit them. So as a result, as you can imagine, the municipal world, the legal world has been abuzz with what do we do and what do we tell our communities? Well, we recommend at the moment that communities opt out right now, not because the community's passing a judgment on whether or not to opt in, but just to protect the community in the event that a business tries to apply to the state because it has a local address and then later says to our community, "Too bad, you're too late, you can't zone us out, you can't regulate us because you didn't act as the act required you to do." And although that risk might be slight, doing nothing nevertheless does create a risk that that could happen. Worse, if we waited until after they applied or even worse, if they were approved at the state level, we couldn't then zone them out if they happened to apply in a zone that we didn't want them in, because under zoning law, they'd be grandfathered, it's a land use and they would be a grandfathered, non-conforming use at that point. So an opt-out ordinance tonight, all it would do is preserve the status quo as it is right now and it'll have no impact on anybody who is going to participate in possessing or using recreational marijuana under the new law. Ironically, they can't legally buy it yet from anyone because the state hasn't developed any rules, so it'll be at least a year and we think closer to two before that ever happens, but they can legally possess it wherever they happen to get it from and opting out tonight won't change that in any way. Another important consideration, we feel worthy of your attention for opting out, at least at the beginning, is the fact that the state is going to take at least a year, possibly 18 months or longer, to develop its rules, although that process could move faster than the medical facility rulemaking process because obviously they have some roadmap already for doing this, that process itself isn't even finished yet and the voters approved it in November of 2015 and the law took effect on December 20th of 2016. Here we are on November 20th, 2018, almost two years later. And as some of you may have heard in the news even this morning, the very first recreational dispensary in Massachusetts opened today, almost two years to the day from the election when the voters approved recreational marijuana, so it does take time. Uh, I, I always like to put something interesting in these presentations for you, so I have a couple of quotes for you from a few other communities that have already opted out. Monroe's city manager said, "We just thought it would be easier to opt out for the time being until we have more information." The city of Pinckney's attorney said, "The conversation was, it's better to opt out now while the whole process is being created by the state and you can always opt in to portions later." And the city of Troy in opting out said, a councilman said, "We don't need to be the first in line, we don't need to be the guinea pig that is the first one to do this." And just one fun fact of interest, the city of Clare, Michigan, actually opted out the day before the election, they didn't even know what the outcome was going to be, but just in case the new law was approved by the voters, they wanted to be ready. Another reason that we've considered for opting out initially at least is we need to study the impact of federal funding. Educational institutions, colleges, and universities are planning to ban recreational marijuana on their properties because they fear losing federal funding for important programs. We aren't sure yet what effect opting in might do to a community on CDBG funding, HUD funding, housing tax credits, we know already that job referral companies and employment council, counselors in the states where it's been legalized are afraid to risk federal funding if they refer people to marijuana establishments for potential jobs, we just have not had time yet because of its newly enacted status to truly study the potential impacts on federal funds that the city or our businesses currently rely upon. Finally, the reason administration is requesting this ordinance be adopted tonight or at least introduced tonight is because, as some of you may know, the process for certifying the state's election takes a while, we anticipate that the state's going to certify the election as being final on November 26th roughly, assuming that's the case, the law takes effect 10 days later, so sometime in early December, but it could get certified earlier by the state, in which case the new law would take effect earlier. That would leave a gap of time that we're here tonight asking that we try to prevent. If that window of time is open, we could see some enterprising individual or business attempting to apply for a Sterling Heights location, knowing that there aren't any regulations on the books and that the city hasn't opted out yet, so we don't know truly what, if that would actually happen, but we thought we'd bring this before you as soon as we could so that you'd have an opportunity to at least debate it and contemplate it and think about the possibilities of it. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions anybody has, if I can.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Denault, we'll open it up at this time for anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this item. Mr. McGregor?
My name is William Allen McGregor, I'm a resident of Sterling Heights, I'm here to speak about this ordinance proposal prohibiting marijuana establishments within the city of Sterling Heights. Before I even begin my argument, I want to express my disappointment, my disgust with whoever has proposed, proposed this ordinance adoption. Not only have you created this ordinance as a quick reaction opposed to, opposed directly to the voters of Sterling Heights, but you've decided to push this ordinance through while the substance remains technically illegal. I understand the best for business model this council has taken over the years, however, this is just the most blatantly cowardice move I've seen or heard about from a local government since the end of the prohibition and the creation of dry counties. So I'm curious, are you doing this as a best for business practice to stop pot shops from popping up everywhere December 6th or are you doing this now because you relied on the citizens who voted yes on Prop One not to show their face while use of this substance remains illegal? Either way, you're wrong. Business, businesses don't just pop up overnight and I for one will not be intimidated, I will not sit idly by to see the will of the people taken away from them within this city. My entire life, I've done my best to respect the law of the land and the fine men and women who enforce it, make no mistake, the finest, the best, the most courageous enforce it, however, on this day, I'll have to congratulate you for deliberately making your citizens, particularly me, stand on the opposing side. Now that I'm done addressing the poor timing of this proposal, I'll use the rest of my time to talk about why it's a bad idea to begin with. By making marijuana establishments illegal within the city, you are endangering your citizens. First, sensible, law-abiding citizens like myself will be forced to travel to cities that don't offer, that don't offer the safety and protection that Sterling Heights offers. You directly are encouraging citizens to grow their own plants, which for most citizens, I can assure you, is a bad idea as our fine men and women down at the fire department already struggle with the illegal home operations causing fires and most of those people have experience, illegal experience, but experience growing marijuana. By not offering stores within the city, you are contributing to the continuation of drug dealers who sell their weed illegally untaxed, the fact that it goes untaxed is really the least of my concerns, the same drug dealers dealing pot illegally are the same ones who sell prescription pills on the streets. Part of the reason some of us voted yes was to get these drugs off the streets as law enforcement can turn their attention away from a plant and onto the opioid epidemic currently plaguing the Macomb County metro Detroit area and frankly, the rest of the country as we continue to crack down on doctors pushing pills down the throats of their patients. Furthermore, my foresight on this issue is that drug dealers will now resort to making more synthetic marijuana and try passing it off as the regular plant while legitimate business chokes their price point out. In the state of Colorado, common strains of the plant can go from anywhere from $6 to $18 a gram, I'm not exactly an expert on the cost of marijuana, but $10 plus a 10% tax doesn't break my bank when we are talking about purchasing a substance that is regulated and relatively safe for use. I've brought with me a chart displaying the price of marijuana in the aforementioned state of Colorado and with the council's permission, I'd like to present it for the people to see.
Yeah, you can put it right on that table there, you see where the light is coming down and they'll zoom in on it.
In the end, if you don't want more fires, vote no, if you care about the will of your citizens, vote no. I'm not opposed to certain zoning ordinances regarding marijuana establishments, I stand however firmly against a motion to prohibit the sales of marijuana within this city. I am firmly against going against the will of the free people in Sterling Heights and trusting my citizens to other communities and black market drug dealers. Our citizens deserve better than that. I trust that this council will hear my plea and at the very least give this ban a sunset clause, that way the topic is automatically reviewed in six months or a year from the date that marijuana becomes legalized and we can together make a better informed decision. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. McGregor, anyone else? Yes, you, sir.
Hello, everyone, hello, council, Joe Badon here, I'm not going to get as elaborate as him, I'm just going to simply state, the, the voters of Sterling Heights voted to approve the Proposal One, I mean, the voters of the state of Michigan did, but the voters of, the majority of the voters that actually showed up to the polls in Sterling Heights said they wanted this proposal, okay? So to ban marijuana establishments within the community, I think, goes against the will of the voter, that, that's my main point. The other point is, kind of, kind of what he was saying, right now, the state hasn't even set any regulations, they haven't, they haven't even begun to unravel what's about to take place within setting up the rules amongst marijuana establishments, so therefore, I, I think it's a little premature just to, just say, "You know what, we're going to ban it all together," I mean, because for one, we're going to take away, they're saying, what I read about the proposal was, or with Proposal One, the tax revenue and the tax benefits for schools and roads will go to the communities that have marijuana establishments within their community. If we ban that, we're, we're, we're not going to be able to benefit from some of those, those state benefits that we're going to get. And then last but not least, you know, if you support alcohol establishments, if you support bars and party stores on every single corner that have, you know, that sell alcohol and tobacco, which I'm not against any of those things because I, you know, I drink, I drink my share of alcohol as well, so I'm not against that, but you know, if you support that and don't support this, I, I feel that it's sort of hypocritical, okay? Because I mean, you're allowing entrepreneurs, business entrepreneurs to actually open up businesses and make money within our community, I, I, I would think that that would benefit the community and not hurt it. You know, my last but not least, I mean, as long as it's regulated and, you know, we don't turn 16-mile road into eight mile, if anyone's ever been down to eight mile, I mean, every single, you know, building is, is a marijuana shop, obviously, we'd have to set some kind of regulations where a certain amount of shops can be open within a certain area, you know, but I, I think banning it is, for one, goes against the will of the people, for two, I, I don't think it's a responsible decision, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Yes, you, sir.
Hi, I just wanted to say that I'm with...
Hi, I just wanted to say that I'm with those two gentlemen, I think the ordinance is a little bit short-sighted. If we did actually want to put, think about it more, give ourselves more time to think about it, I think putting some sort of sunset clause in it would be much more appropriate. I think if we go an outright ban it with an ordinance, I think it only further continues stigmatizing marijuana and those that use it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to introduce the ordinance amending the city code by adding Sections 35 through 70 to Chapter 35 to prohibit marijuana establishments within the city pursuant to the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act of 2018. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
Well, first of all, I want to first thank the people that came up and talked to us and tell us how you feel about what we're doing tonight. But I also know that not everybody feels that way. My biggest concern is the state not having any regulations. And not only that, is we could start putting an ordinance in place and saying that, you know, you can't have an establishment within 500 feet of a school, you could do the same thing that we do for liquor license, we could put all that in place, but then the state will come out with a law that will supersede what we're doing. So then, out of the efforts that we've put into regulating this and making it a safe place to buy, wouldn't work. I mean, it would get thrown out. The other thing is, is we aren't telling people that they can't use it in Sterling Heights. Come December the 1st, it's legal to use marijuana in the state of Michigan, and it's also legal to grow marijuana for your own personal use in the state of Michigan. Nobody's saying that you can't. But right now, we don't have enough information from the state as to what they're going to do. They don't even have anything in place. It has taken them, is it three years now, and they have three people working on the medical marijuana law? Three people, three years. Some of this, it's a constant back and forth with the state. That's my concern, is I don't trust the state to give us the tax dollars that they say that we're going to get. They've said that we had given us revenue sharing, we were going to get that. We were going to get money from the fireworks sales, because we could train paramedics, we could train our firefighters to be paramedics. Well, it doesn't help us, because they have to be a paramedic before we can even hire them. So those are things that I am very cautious about, not the person that wants to open up their own business, not the person that wants to use it. That we know is law. I'm trying to protect all of us from, you could have somebody want, and go out and pull 20 licenses for the city of Sterling Heights. That's what I'm trying to stop, until we figure out what's going on at the state level. I'm not sure I want a sunset clause, because you don't know how long it's going to take the state to actually come up with the regulations, which means you can have an entirely different council here, and you are putting them in a position where they are, might have to act on something that they don't want to. My other thought is, if we don't do the sunset clause, I would really like periodic updates as to where the state is on these regulations. So that means if something comes up, and if we do this once a month, if we do it every six weeks, that we could let council know what's going on, as well as the community with what's going on, so that we can stay up to date. I know there are people that want to open these businesses, but until we get everything in place, it's not that I want to stop you from using it, I understand that people are going to use it. December the 1st is legal in the state of Michigan. But when you look at the other states, how long it's taken them to put these laws in place, it's two years. And I don't want anything to happen here where we can't go back and change things. There's a couple of other things that, you know, you say that the tax dollars that we're going to be getting from this. Through the chair, if it's okay with you, Mayor Taylor, I noticed that the chief is still sitting here, and I would like to get some input from him as far as what would go into policing establishments in the city, and what you think it would cost us.
Chief Dzorjakowski.
Mrs. Zarco. We've been trying to get our hands around the medical marijuana issue. We have a lot of home grow operations throughout the city. We've had house fires, we've had people trying to make marijuana wax with a bunch of butane, burn themselves up, burn their house up. A gentleman was growing marijuana in his basement and using gasoline to clean up some product, caught the basement on fire. We have an officer right now that works in our narcotics division that is assigned pretty much full-time doing nothing but marijuana inspections on these home grows. Last year, we did approximately 60 to 70 inspections, we shut down close to 20 to 30 operations. This year, we're on track to do 100 inspections and probably 30 or 40 grow operations that are illegal, we're going to have to shut them down, which is a lot of manpower, a lot of resources, to do the investigation, the original notice, the citation, and then the court time with the officers, not to mention the fire department that assists with these, and the code enforcement officers that also assist with these. We just don't have enough guys. So, if you wanted me to make sure that your neighbor isn't going to burn their house down, if you want to make sure your neighbor's not going to kill himself, or you're going to have brownouts in subdivisions or neighborhoods, in the smell of marijuana, or four or five air conditioning units running non-stop so that people have to hear this throughout the whole subdivision, if you want me to monitor this and enforce this, you're going to need extra police officers. And I don't know if that's two extra officers or three extra officers, but it would be extra police officers that I don't have in my budget.
Through the chair again to the chief. Do you have an idea of how much money we'll be getting back on this?
I don't know the legality, I heard something about 15% of the total tax revenue goes back to the cities that opt into the marijuana programs you allow businesses, and 15%, I don't know what the totals take from the state is going to be. I have a bunch of different numbers, $200 million, $300 million for the tax revenue, and we're going to get 15% towards enforcement or regulation back. That's separated out to every community that does allow marijuana into their community. I have no idea what the numbers are going to be, and I don't know if they're going to manifest, and how many dollars there's going to be, I couldn't answer that.
Okay. Thank you for your input. So, I guess, if you're asking me the advice that I've been given, first of all, administration, secondly, our city attorney, our police chief, the fire chief, Michigan Municipal League, and the other communities that have opted out for the time being, how do you, common sense tells me, that why would I go against all of this advice and go in another direction, when I'm really trying to protect the people that actually spoke here this evening as well? So, and I hope that's the way you take it. This is not an infringement on your rights, it's to protect your rights as well. So that's what I'm trying to do here, and I think as long as we go with the spirit of, you know, of what we're trying to do is for everybody, then it's the way to go. Right now, we need to opt out until we find out what's going on at the state level, and that might be a period of two years. And if it took that long in Colorado, Washington State, in Massachusetts, why do we think it's going to be any different here in Michigan? That's all I have to say right now, but if I come up with anything else, I'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Well, Mrs. Zarco, you said a lot of what I was going to say. I want to be clear about this, that this does not affect personal use. It affects storefront, it affects processing, commercial processing. We, in the city of Sterling Heights, have always prided ourselves that we do our homework, and we do what we think is in the best interest of all the residents of the city. We have to do our homework. We have no notes to do homework with. Nothing's written, nothing has been presented from the state level. I think it would be, it would be dangerous of us to not opt out at this point, because we don't know what the state's coming down. And per Mr. Denault, it could be one to two years before the first legal sale goes into effect. So let's protect our city as a whole until we know what all of these particulars are going to be with this law. I'm not in agreement for a sunset clause either. You know, it's the privilege of the council to amend an ordinance anytime they want to. So having a sunset clause really means nothing except that, as to what Mrs. Zarco alluded, if the laws or the regulations are not in place before that sunset comes up, then we're back to square one with, we might as well have not opted out at all. So, I as well, am not trying to eliminate personal use in the city, but I think from a commercial standpoint, we need to get this right. We have a chance to make sure we get it right. And a little, you know, it was said that this is a knee-jerk reaction, I think if we don't do it, it's a knee-jerk reaction. I think this is, you know, we were put up here to protect the residents of the city, and if people want to use it, use it. It'll be legal. But we need to protect the businesses and all the residents of the city, as far as how businesses are regulated, and how we want businesses to be in this city, and the state hasn't given us any Cliff Notes on what they're thinking. And quite frankly, I don't always trust what the state's going to do. So, I'd like to see that before I make a decision on what we would like in our community. As far as Colorado, Colorado took two years before their first legal storefront sale occurred. They had a longer period of time for which establishments could apply for a license, so that the state could figure it out a little bit better, but still, 75% of the communities in Colorado have opted out and are opted out at this point today. So, I'm not saying that we'll always be opted out, this council is not always going to be the same people that are sitting up here right now. So, at this point, I think it is the safe thing to do for our community, and that's why I am in favor of the ordinance before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Council, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Well, I do, I agree with Mrs. Zarco and Mrs. Schmidt, but I want to be very, very clear, that this is only a temporary, this is only something that we're doing just to make sure that we're not jumping ahead and getting ahead of ourselves, licenses. We don't want to have to have establishments out there that are already functioning by the time these licenses are granted, and then the state gives us different regulations, which says, oh, you can only have 10, and we've already got 20 out there. We want to make sure that we are on the ball and following the regulations when we get them. This also gives us an opportunity, because we now, we do have guidelines for the medical marijuana, which we have not addressed at this time. This gives us an opportunity to deal with that, and to get some good guidelines and good ordinances through our city, so that we can go forward. Recreational is just, right now, it's the Wild, Wild West, and it's not, as we've already heard, I really truly believe it's just in our best interest to just wait, and I, you know, hate the wait-and-see attitude, because we like to be proactive, we want to be forthright and progressively thinking, but until we have some guidelines, we are, and you know, the Liquor Control Commission regulates establishments, types of sale, hours of sale. We have nothing in the state to regulate the use and the sale of regular recreational marijuana, so we have to get, there's not even a commission out there. So this is just, right now, it's the best thing that we can do for the citizens, and yes, there was a 300 votes of majority, out of the 55,000 voters, and the people that voted in Sterling Heights, there were 300 majority in favor of the proposal one. So we still have, although it's been, the majority does rule, it makes it legal, but it doesn't prevent us from enacting some ordinances, and if this ordinance, you know, if, right now, it's just a prohibition ordinance, as Ms. Schmidt says, we can address it at any time. So I am in favor of holding off until we have some good state guidelines. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Miss Mayor Protem Sarowski. Anyone else? Mrs. Kosky.
Through the chair to Mr. Denault, if you would please, I'm going to be a little redundant here and go over a few things with you one more time. Now, what we're doing tonight is strictly the ordinance portion as to the recreational marijuana establishments here in the city. So, proposal one passed, which makes it legal to use marijuana. I would like you to go over what that means to use marijuana. That means you can grow how many plants, and where can you grow them, and so on. Then, what happens when the certification takes place in Lansing? Do they set their regulations first, before they issue any licenses? Or are they going to go ahead and issue licenses for the sale and grow of commercial-type recreational marijuana? How does that work?
Mr. Denault?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Thank you, Ms. Kosky. I'll take the second question first. So the process will work like this. The state will get to work on regulations that they feel are appropriate for this new industry, and it is a new industry for the state. They will look at everything from security requirements, to age requirements, to background checks, to qualifications and experience, and eventually, they'll put together a nice slate of rules, they'll probably fight about them and debate them, they'll tweak them and revise them. We're still getting bulletins every week on the medical marijuana revisions and tweaks that are being done, but they will get there eventually. It might be a little bit interesting with the new governor coming in, and some conflict between perhaps the governor's office and the House and Senate, but they'll get done. What that will mean is, when the rules are in place, the state will then be prepared, it will have the structure in place to accept the first application. So they'll have developed a form and a process for applying, a fee, a form, all of the things you need. What they did with medical was, they said, "We're going to pre-qualify you first." So, nice and smooth, we can let you know right up front, you're going to make it pass the first round. If you make it pass the first round, that's when it gets detailed and serious, and we're going to get really into the nitty-gritty, and make sure you meet all the last criteria that exist. Once we're ready to do all of that, then we'll be at the approval phase. There have been many in the state of Michigan for medical that have been denied, there have been some that have been approved. I actually have the numbers, if anyone's interested, it's not many yet, it's still happening, and it's happening very slowly. But that'll be the same case here. Eventually, then, the state will approve a location, but they're going to do so, we believe, based on whether or not that community even allows those businesses in the first place. So what will happen is, if the community has done nothing, then technically, it's allowed. So it's likely the state's going to say, "Well, we're not going to deny somebody in Sterling Heights, or Clinton Township, or Troy, because those communities haven't done anything." Therefore, therefore, they're in.
You're speculating.
I am completely speculating, yes. But, it was written in reverse, because the medical law says, "We have to opt in if we want to be part of it." This one says, "We have to get out if we don't want to be part of it." So it is speculation, but likely, that is how it's going to play out in the municipal view. Ultimately, then, the applicant gets the permission from the state, and they go to work in the community that has no rules. At that point, they have to follow the state's rules, but the city would have no zoning authority, no regulatory authority on the books, and if they go to a zone that we don't want them in at that point, we could zone for it and say, "Well, we don't want them in C1 or C2," but if they're already in C1 or C2, they'd be grandfathered. So, the process, we think, will play out in that fashion. If our rules and our zoning are already in place, assuming the city council at that time wants to do that, then we'll have the rules in place, so that businesses and applicants will know, "I can go in that zone, I can do this sort of work, I know there's going to be this many available to us," and then they can, they have a fair playing field, level playing field to work from. But right now, there is no playing field, so it's just a free-for-all, and that's what we're most worried about. So that was question one, or question two. Question one was, what exactly does this law mean? So, I spent quite a bit of time trying to interpret it, the writing of it is unique. But essentially, you can summarize it like this, if you're 21-years-old, you can possess, use, consume, internally possess, purchase, transport, or process 2.5 ounces or less of marijuana, but 15 grams of marijuana is okay if it's marijuana concentrate. Within your house, you can possess, store, and process not more than 10 ounces of marijuana, and any marijuana produced by marijuana plants that are cultivated on the premises, and you can cultivate not more than 12 marijuana plants at your house for personal use, and you can assist someone who is 21-years of age or older in any And you can assist someone who is 21 years of age or older in any of those actions as well if you want to be an assistant to them. You can give away, this is a new one, give away or transfer without money being paid to you up to 2.5 ounces of marijuana or 15 grams of concentrate to anybody who's 21 years of age or older. But you cannot advertise or promote that transfer of marijuana to the public. That's pretty much it from the personal side. And then, as I went over before, the business side would be grow, process, test, transport, dispense, those types of things.
So that means that you could be driving down the street smoking a, what do they call them, a joint?
Well, it does not mean that. There are some exceptions to your rights in this statute. The exceptions include operating while under the influence, so you cannot be affected by it. You cannot give it to somebody under 21. You cannot be a person under 21 and do any of those things we talked about. You cannot use butane extraction or another flashpoint type method in a public place, a motor vehicle, or within the curtilage of any residential house. You cannot, and this is probably the closest one to your question, you cannot consume marijuana in a public place or smoke it where prohibited by the person who owns that property. You cannot cultivate plants if they're visible from a public place without the use of binoculars or other optical aids. You cannot consume while you're operating any motor vehicle, aircraft, snowmobile, off-road vehicle, or motorboat. You cannot smoke as a passenger in any of those things upon a public way. You cannot possess any of these things that we've talked about in a school. And you cannot have more than 2.5 ounces of marijuana in your own residence unless the access is stored in a container that has security devices on it. So that's the long version of, or actually the short version of a long list of things that you cannot do even with these new rights.
So no walking down the street, no driving in the car?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Kosky. Anyone else, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Redkey. You know, this, this question is a public policy question. But we're not having a public policy discussion up here. We're having a boogeyman discussion because the law was passed. And that's really where I, I disagree with my colleagues up here. I think that we need to have a real conversation about medical marijuana, but also about recreational marijuana in our city with facts and information that is not just, oh, wow, we don't know what's going to happen. We have to go out and we have to ban it. So I pushed in council chambers and, and out here, we should have a sunset clause on this. Because that public policy discussion needs to happen. So I propose two years. We should put a two-year on this ordinance. I'd vote for it. So that in two years, once we have regulations from the state, once everybody's calmed down, once everybody's less afraid about what's happening, because, you know, in a week or two, it's going to be legal to use cannabis and smoke cannabis and eat gummies or whatever you want to do, we have that public policy discussion. It needs to happen. And by burying our heads in the sand and just saying, we're just going to ban it and we're just going to let the council approve it in the future, I think we all know up here that that's not going to happen. Because when things happen in Sterling Heights, they kind of go on the same track. I mean, I've been trying to amend the sign ordinance here for some time. And that's, that's its own, you know, its own war. And the idea that we're going to say that, well, you know, we're going to ban it temporarily and somewhere in the distant future, maybe we'll all come to a conclusion that we should reinstitute it or re-approach it, we all know that's false. People up here are lying to you. It's never going to happen. And so I, I disagree with this completely. I have a list of things I'm going to kind of go down through here, so we're going to talk about this in a minute. You know, we can't bury our heads in the sand. This is a business. In Colorado, it's a business. In Washington State, it's a business. In, in Ontario, Canada, it's a business now. And Sterling Heights has wonderful industrial facilities. We have, we have an ability to really, I think, make this a business. And we're talking about banning it because I think we have some misguided ideas from the past about what marijuana is or what it does. Some idea that somehow if you smoke a joint today, you're going to be doing heroin tomorrow. It just doesn't hold. You know, we're claiming, and I have, I have, actually, you have a question? Through the chair to Mr. Kachubski.
Yes.
Was this institute as an emergency ordinance or is it just a regular ordinance at this point?
It's a two-step process.
Two-step process, thank you. You know, because originally it was an emergency. We're going to pass it in one shot today. And I guess now we're going to, we're going to give some time for the public to have some feedback on this. But I think about other things the public has given us feedback on. Our recreating recreation, which I think everyone up here is very proud of, passed very narrowly, narrowly in the city. The voters had their say. And I think it would be shocking for people up here on the council to say, well, we don't care what the voters had to say. We're going to institute our personal beliefs in view of what the voters have said. I think that that's wrong. You know, citizen input is important. This kind of just snuck onto the agenda and kind of got pushed out here. I think if people had more time to really digest this, we'd have an audience full of people who would have differing opinions. Some people are going to say we should ban it completely and I respect their opinion. I don't use marijuana. I think people who use marijuana are probably kind of stupid. But it's, it's going to be legal and we have to really face that fact. The way we've done things in the state is going to change. And we have to change with the times. You know, we tried to talk about Sterling Heights being a forward-looking and a forward-moving city. But when we do stuff like this, we're not forward-looking, we're not forward-moving. We're kind of going in the opposite direction. You know, the state says rules will not be promulgated for 18 months. So let's put an 18-months or two-year moratorium on this or a sunset clause. So after those 18 months and we have rules, we can have that policy discussion. Because right now, I don't know how, how someone could even get a facility and start selling and do a license without the rules. At, at that point, they'd be in violation of the law. Because without emergency rules, how can you sell marijuana? You're violating the, the law. You know, I just can't stand the idea that this is some kind of boogeyman. And if, if we, if we don't pass, you know, if we don't have, screw the discussion. If we just don't say no to marijuana today, that suddenly it's going to be pot shops galore and everybody's going to move in tomorrow. I think this is a heavily capital-intensive business and especially because of federal regulations, you can't just put this money in a bank. So the idea that every, every Tom, Dick, and Harry are going to start opening up marijuana facilities in the city, I think is wrong. Additionally, we're not talking about just banning dispensaries. We're talking about banning growers, processors, transporters, and testing facilities. We're just doing a blanket ban here. We're not differentiating. If we don't want medical dispensaries in our city or even regular recreational dispensaries, or whatever we're going to call them, micro businesses in our city, we should, we should ban them. But the idea that we're going to ban an entire industry which is going to be moving elsewhere, and you know, people are going to go where the business is. We get tax revenue for selling it in the city. Warren is going to pass regulations. I guess Troy banned it, but maybe Shelby Township will. So we're going to tell our people in Sterling Heights that this thing that is completely legal, like alcohol, you cannot get in our city because the city council has determined that it just would be too detrimental to our city to do. I, I think that's wrong. You know, and especially, you know, the grows in the neighborhoods really, really bother me and they worry me because they are, they are dangerous. And we've done so much, our police department has done so much to, to end them. But this law now says anyone over the age of 21 can grow 12 plants in their home, as long as it's allowed. So it's not even a matter of controlling grows anymore. It's now, that's the law. And I think honestly, the state legislature needs to approach this issue, needs to maybe amend it somewhat to fix some of the problems. Much like medical marijuana, the original law that was passed is not the law that's in effect now. Two-thirds of the state legislature had to come together and, and amend that law because they knew that the way it was structured by non-lawyers wasn't the best way. And also in this law, one of the things that bothers me is the impractical standard. One thing we don't know until the emergency rules are promulgated are how we can regulate these dispensaries. So that bothers me. That's why I would like a sunset clause. I would like two years to really study this, this issue. We can have a proper policy discussion so that we're making policy that's right, not based on fear. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Redkey. Mr. Shannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask a couple of questions and make a few statements here. And to start out though, I will respectfully be disagreeing with a few of my council members, but in a respectful way. Because I completely understand their point of view and understand that there's, this is a new thing. This is something that we've never faced before. Most of us probably thought that we've never faced in our lifetime, to be, to be honest with you. It's, it's quite amazing that this is, this is taking place. So if I could, through the chair to Mr. Denault, a couple of questions. So I, I do agree with, with Mr. Redkey that I would like to see a two-year, a two-year sunset clause or a moratorium until we see what happens within the state. But I'll, you know, don't need to really belabor that point anymore because it's been, been put out there. And I can see where the votes are anyway, so this is going to be kind of a moot point. But I just wanted to kind of get on record some of the way, the way that I feel about the issue. So how long does it take, if you know? And I, I presented this, some of the questions to, to Mark and Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Kachubski and Mr. Vanderpool earlier today. I'm not sure if you saw these questions. So I'm not, I don't know if you're prepared to answer this question or not. Maybe Mr. Kachubski, Kachubski is. So how long does it take to get a medical marijuana license now? Any idea? It's not, it's not a slow, it's not a quick process from what I understand.
Mr. Denault.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Shannon. Absolutely not a quick process. I brought a few statistics with me. The state's first seven medical marijuana licenses were approved in mid-July of this year, about 20 months from when the law took effect. Not from when the, the voters passed it, but the voters approved it in November of '15 with an effective date of December of '16. From December of '16, it took 20 months until the first seven licenses were approved. And just by way of further statistical information, Oakland County's first license, which was a dispensary in Wald Lake, was approved in mid-October, just last month. And ironically, that particular licensee was quoted as saying, I don't even have access to any inventory of product yet. I just have the right to sell what I can't get just yet. As of mid-October, only nine had been approved for growing, five for processing, 29 for dispensaries, three for transports, and four for testing.
So that gives us some, some, some time, really. I mean, just that process alone gives us some time for the state to sort of go through their process of coming up with the rules. So it's, nobody's going to be coming to City Hall tomorrow saying, here, I'm opening up a marijuana shop and, you know, give me my license now. So it's going to take some time. So that gives us a little bit of cover. Also, so I know that we're waiting for the state to come up with the rules for, the laws of how marijuana can be sold. Why can't we make our own rules? Why can't we, for the, for the time being, opt in and make up our own rules? And then once the city, once the state has come up with their laws, then we have, then we go back two years from now and we change those laws? Or we change our, our rules to comply with the, with the state?
Sure, absolutely, valid question. We absolutely could do that.
Yeah.
It's just going to be a process. A, a big policy discussion, of course, as we bring rules forward that we think police, fire code, lawyers, and municipal officials all believe will work. But it can be done. We could absolutely put rules in place. The problem, as you pointed out, is a lot or many of those rules could be preempted. They could be thrown out. They could be, I suppose, deemed that impracticable standard that's in the statute. It's a very broad standard. We won't know if we meet the test. But yeah, absolutely, we could put them in the books. Probably take, I would, if I had to guess, about six months to develop that for the city and then put them on the books and then wait and see what the, what the state does.
Even if we use the guidelines that have been set by the state regarding medical marijuana, even if we use the, all those rules that said, all right, we're just going to apply those to recreational? That can, could take some time off of that?
We could try. I think those though, there would be a lot of legalese twisting and turning to revise those to make sure they fit here because this model is different.
Yeah. I mean, I only bring it up just because I thought that, you know, we could be the, you know, you know, are in charge of our own destiny. So one thing that I'm, that's all the questions I have. I just did want to point out that I do feel for the police department. I do feel for the fire department. But we're not really talking about the issue of home grows. That's in place. I mean, the, we're getting, now we're going to have even more people that are going to be allowed to grow in the homes. And so that's not the issue that we're really discussing tonight. We're discussing whether or not we're going to allow businesses to operate medical, or I'm sorry, I should say marijuana businesses to operate this evening. So it's really not an issue about, about the home grows. So let me see here what else I have. Also, the idea that just because it was a very, you know, very narrow margin of, you know, of a win for Prop 1, I don't think that that delegitimizes the fact that Sterling Heights residents voted in favor of this, of the proposal 1. And so this is not my vote. This is the vote of the residents. They've already given me direction. It is not very often that we get this sort of direct input from the residents with their vote in favor of proposal 1. So I understand the vote was close, like I said before, but the majority voted in favor and we're fully aware of the implications of their vote. So in my opinion, I cannot vote, I cannot vote against the will of the voters and I will be voting no on the ordinance because that's what the voters have told me to do. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shannon. I'm going to try to be as quick as I can, but I have a lot to say, as you might imagine. In our backup material, as Mrs. Zarco alluded to, we have received advice from the city attorney, from the city manager, from the police chiefs, from the fire chiefs, and there are other organizations outside of the city who have weighed in on this as well. I respect the opinion of the fire chief and the police chief. And there's not, if you read their statements, which is publicly available to, to download from the city's website, there's not much that I disagree with in there. However, I disagree that much of anything they've said is applicable to the issue that we're addressing tonight. The fire chief's main concern is grow operations. He's got about a one paragraph statement where he talks about how dangerous in-home grow operations are. I don't disagree with that at all. I've heard estimates of the number of in-home grow operations that we have in Sterling Heights and it's shocking. It is a nuisance in our neighborhood. It's a problem. And as the police chief said, we don't have the resources to devote police officers' time, investigative resources to be tracking these grow operations down, shutting them down, and making sure that they're legal. This, this new law that was passed essentially gives, gives you two ways to get legal marijuana. You can either grow it yourself in your house, which we don't want to encourage, which we know is a problem, which we have years of experience is a problem. We have our police chief and our fire chief saying is a problem. So that's one option. The other option is to buy regulated taxed marijuana at a facility or an establishment that is licensed by the state of Michigan and operating under rules and regulations that have yet to be promulgated but will be promulgated before licenses are granted. So those are the two ways you can get marijuana. And I don't think anybody who wants to get marijuana will be deterred from getting it. They will either get it legally by growing it in their house or getting it from a facility. Or they may get it illegally by buying it from a dealer. There will still be a black market. There's no way to stop it. When you tax something at 10%, there are plenty of people who would much rather just buy it without having to pay tax. There are plenty of people though, who would forego the black market in order to buy it if it's regulated. So the idea that these grow operations are bad is, I think, something that we can all agree on, all seven of us, and most, most everybody in the community can agree on as well. So by opting out today, what we are telling the community is if you want marijuana, grow it in your house. And we have our police chief saying, we cannot have grow operations. We can't get our arm around the grow operations. The grow operations are really hampering our ability to do the other police work that we need to do. So why are we enacting a policy that is driving the market into home grows? It doesn't make any sense to me. So all of the information about home grows, I completely agree with the chiefs. It just doesn't seem that we're creating a policy that comports with what he's saying or what both of them are saying. Another thing the police chief says is that we won't know how to police the establishments without rules from the state. And I agree with that, but that's really a moot point because these establishments are not going to come into existence until the rules have been promulgated. So Mr. Denault laid it out, what the timeline is going to be, and I'll get to it in a bit. But, but the gist of it was, the state comes up with their rules. Once they come up with their rules, then they come up with a way to apply. You apply based on the rules and then there's an approval process. And those are all lengthy steps that have to be developed by the state before anybody can apply. So it's not as if, if we don't opt out today, it's not as if some business is going to be able to go apply to the state of Michigan for a license. They're not going to be able to apply to the city of Sterling Heights for a license. And in fact, there is no licensing process at the city. And the idea that they're going to show up to the counter at City Hall and say, I would like a variance for my marijuana business, is to me, really, I think, an idea that doesn't seem to make any sense. If somebody came up and said, I want a variance to operate a marijuana business, I think the, I think the, the city employees would say, well, we don't have an ordinance. We don't, you don't have a license, you don't have the ability to do that. So you're barking up the wrong tree. So it just seems far-fetched and convoluted to think that somebody's going to come here and then when they're turned away, assert that they have a property right or they have a due process right to a license or to a business when... when the state has not even come up with a licensing structure for that business. And we know it's gonna be heavily and highly regulated. So I, I don't see how that's, how that's really even a concern at this time. So, a couple other things. Uh, our city attorney, uh, Mr. Denault, um, you talked about, uh, when, in your, in your statement, uh, you said that any property or any zoning could potentially apply for this. If you, if you don't mind, I have a few questions for you. So, wh- when you were making your statement, you said, um, any property owner, what, of, of any zoning, could potentially apply for a, for a what? What would they be applying for if we, if we do nothing?
Right, so I think the, the bigger risk, the small risk, as I, and I mentioned it's a small risk. But the small risk is that someone establishes and invests in property in Sterling Heights, in any zoning district, even residential, for example. Um, although that one, hopefully, we'd win because it's not a commercial enterprise zone. But assuming they go into a commercial district, we wouldn't want them in to be, to be in later. Uh, they go in, they make the investment, they set up shop, uh, they don't start actually operating yet, um, but they put all of the mechanisms in place, including some type of, and I get where you're coming from, some kind of type of ridiculous application, uh, saying, "We're applying. This is our spot, we're gonna be the first in line, because city of Sterling Heights, you don't have, you have not prohibited this, and you have not zoned this." Um, then we get around to the licensing process. We see it coming, hopefully, right? We catch it at the administrative level, uh, and we start coming back to council with rules and, and, and an ordinance. But what if we're too late? I mean, I think that's the, the municipal worry, is what if we just miss it? Because it's, it happens in, in municipal history. You know, in twenty-two years, things can get missed, things are overlooked. So if we miss it, then all of a sudden, there's somehow, they may have a grandfather right. So even if we can regulate them, they might get to stay where they're at. And if the city council decides at that time, "We don't want these in that zone," whatever these is, whether it's a grow, whether it's a dispensary, um, whether it's a processing facility, whatever it may be, uh, the concern becomes at that point that they become grandfathered in some way. Not that they have a property right, but that they have a land use right of some kind. Again, it's a minor, minor risk. The bigger risk, I think, is we just don't wanna miss, um, doing something at the time when all of this starts to happen, either because there's a change in administration or council, or we have a three-to-three tie, or we have some other unforeseen circumstance. I think it's our, it's our lawyer-ness that, to wanna be very protective and careful.
Okay, wh- why is it that you think that somebody could apply to sell a commercial product in a residential zone, and if we don't, if we don't? So we don't have an ordinance on the books right now that says, um, you can't sell marijuana in non-commercial-y zoned areas, right?
Right.
Okay. Before, let's say, two thousand and twelve, or two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, there was no such thing as an iPad, right?
Right.
Okay. Then Steve Jobs invents the iPad. What if Apple said, "Well, you don't have anything on your books prohibiting me from putting a huge Apple Store right in the middle of a residential area. So why can't I sell my iPads in the middle of a residential area?" We would say, "Of course, Mr. Jobs, you can't do that. You're selling a commercial product, it has to be sold in a commercial area. You can't sell it in an industrial zoned area, you can't sell it in an office zoned area. You have to sell it in a commercially zoned area." Why are you telling me that marijuana, which is going to be regulated much higher than iPads, why would we ever think that the state would say to somebody, "Well, sorry, Sterling Heights, you just missed out on it, you missed the boat, you were too late"? What, explain that to me.
I will, um, because this is so different. What we've seen in the medical world, the medical marijuana world in the case law that's come out so far, is that municipalities that have tried to rely on their zoning ordinances have lost. And it's not because the iPad came first and then they weren't allowed to be in a certain zone as a commercial enterprise, it's because these laws, as approved by the voters of the state of Michigan, all of these, uh, at least the two, the medical marijuana and this one, um, these laws are the will of the people, that no person shall be subject to prosecution or loss of any privilege, loss of any immunities, loss of any rights. It is an affirmative grant of a right to people to do these things. That's different than saying, "We have a zoning ordinance that lets you do certain things in certain areas, but if you come in and ask to do it, or you set up shop without permission, we can't kick you out, we can kick you out of the wrong zone. You're not grandfathered if you come into a zone you can't be in." Here, though, you have the absolute right, under these laws, these voter-initiated statutes, to do these activities, the ones I laid out for all of us tonight.
But don't I have a constitutionally protected First Amendment right to freedom of speech, right?
Of course.
But that doesn't mean I can walk into your house and subject you to my speech, right? So there are rights that we have that have to work in conjunction with other rights. And I'm not aware of any case or any stat, or anything that's come out in any other state. Are you aware of any other states where cities have failed to pass an ordinance? And the, the government told them, "Well, you know, these marijuana facilities are just gonna have to be in, in residential areas, they're gonna have to be in areas where you wouldn't expect a commercial product to be sold because you didn't make that affirmative step to, to zone it properly."
Great question. We have not researched the law in those other states yet, and it's new here. But in the Medical Facilities Act world, uh, there are at least two opinions that I can think of right now, at the appellate levels, um, that said, uh, in the one case, it was a bizarre case where the community actually tried to zone it to residential, they just wanted it in other, in other districts for some reason, and the court said, "No. The Medical Marijuana Act says you have the right to do it, and it doesn't matter where." So that's the risk, that's the concern.
What, what does that mean? You have the right to do what?
In that particular, in that particular case, it's to use, possess, uh, or grow the medical marijuana.
Okay. And so the court was saying that, uh, help me understand. The court was saying that, what? That you can't, cities can't prohibit it in commercial, industrial, whatever areas?
Correct, that's what they said in that case.
Okay, so, so if the city of Sterling Heights came up with a medical marijuana ordinance that says, "We're gonna allow provisioning centers in commercially zoned areas," and somebody says, "Nope, we want it in an industrial zone area, or we want it in a residential area, there's nothing we could do to stop that," based on that case?
No, that case is, that, that's a different animal. That was just an example to answer your question. In this world, this recreational world, we have the ability to restrict and zone.
Okay, so that, isn't that, that's the solution, then?
It is, as long as we get to it first.
It's a commercial product.
Yep.
We would, all of our other commercial products are sold in commercially zoned areas. It seems like that would be something that we could probably figure out in a matter of five or ten minutes. I know we're, we're waiting on rules and regulations from the state of Michigan, but what would stop us from just saying, "We're going to, we're, we're going to issue very strict regulations, and if the state says, 'Oh, you can't have that, those, the regulations can't be that strict,' then we change our ordinance." I mean, that happens a lot. The state, states change the law, and so we, uh, amend our ordinance accordingly. For example, we have a very restrictive billboard ordinance in the city of Sterling Heights. If the federal, if, if a court tells us that our billboard ordinance is too restrictive, we would just change it, right?
Correct.
Why don't we instead just completely prohibit billboards? Because that's unreasonable, and we know we're gonna lose on that. So what stops, if we just completely prohibit, it's permitted in this ordinance, or it's permitted in this law, right?
Right.
So, what I'm, what I'm hearing here is that we can't, what, what, what I'm hearing is that we're not making a substantive decision to prohibit marijuana. We're saying, "Let's just wait and see what the state does," which is not what Sterling Heights normally does. We don't wait and see, it's not, we, when, when the state is fumbling and bumbling with road funding, we don't say, "Well, you know, let's just wait and see what the state does. Maybe the state will come up with some really good program to fix our roads." No, we go out and, we fix our roads now. When we need parks and recreation, we don't wait for somebody else, we go out and do it. And I, I've heard parks, I've heard the Parks and Recreation Initiative brought up today. Or I've heard that, I, I should say, I've heard that this ord, this, uh, law passed in Sterling Heights, but it passed by a very narrow margin. I agree with you, and so did the Parks and Recreation Initiative. The Parks and Rec Initiative last year passed fifty point seven yes, forty-nine point three no. That was in two thousand and sixteen. Prop One, which is recreational marijuana, passed fifty point three yes to forty-nine point seven no. Almost an identical percentage. And I think everyone at this table would agree that the Parks and Recreation Initiative has been an incredible success for our city. I didn't hear anyone on the council say, "You know, Parks and Rec only passed by a few hundred votes, maybe we should scale this thing back substantially." No, we went full steam ahead, and it's been, it's been a great success. There were, I looked at the numbers today. There, there were about forty thousand people who voted in both two thousand and sixteen in Sterling Heights and two thousand and eighteen. So if you look at the numbers of people who voted in the general elections, at least forty thousand people, or thereabouts, voted in both elections. And it was fifty-fifty, so it's, it's reasonable to assume that at least twenty thousand people who live in the city of Sterling Heights voted both for the Parks and Recreation Initiative and for recreational marijuana in Sterling Heights. So we've constantly touted the Parks and Recreation Initiative passing as a way to signal to young families, to signal to people, "We are a city that's opening." And this isn't, this is the proof. The people voted, over twenty thousand people voted for Parks and Recreation to pass because they want, they want this in their community. And those same exact people who we are touting as leading us into a progressive future for the city of Sterling Heights want this here. So while Mrs. Zarco, I respectfully, um, understand your position that the administration, the police chief, the fire chief, the city attorney, the MML, and on and on and on and on have told us we should be, um, we should be wary of this, the residents have voted yes. And I'm inclined to go with what the residents want. And I don't believe we need to protect the residents from themselves. I think they're fully capable of determining what's in their best interest. So, we got a long time before the regs are gonna come out from the state. There's no, there's no danger in waiting. We can wait, we can use the next three to six months while the state's coming up with their regulations to come up with our own regulations. We can create strict regulations, or we can create loose regulations. I mean, here's what, when we talk about these regulations, here's what we're talking about, just to put it in plain English. We're talking about location. Marijuana is legal, it's going to be gotten. Do you want it to be gotten illegally, or do you want it to be gotten legally? Do you want it to be safe and regulated and taxed so that our city's benefiting from it? Or do you want it to not be? Do you want our residents to have to drive to the city of Warren, to other, to the city of Detroit, or to other locations to get it? Or do you want our residents to be able to get this safe, regulated, legal product close to their own home? So where is it gonna be? Location. We can regulate the distance from schools, we can regulate the distance from residential, we can regulate what kind of zoning district it's gonna be in, we can say it's only going to be in C-one, C-two, C-three. The state might come back and say, "No, you can't, you can't limit it to C-one, C-two, C-three, you have to open it up to residential." I highly doubt that. There's no reason to think they would do that. They wouldn't do that with any other product, let alone marijuana. We can limit how many facilities there are. There could be two, there could be four, there could be six. We could limit the type of, of facilities, provisioning centers, grow operations, testing facilities. We can limit and, and create regulations regarding the hours of operation. We can say we only want it sold Mondays through Fridays. We can say we only want it during daylight hours. We can say we want it from ten AM until five PM. The state might say, "That's not reasonable, ten AM to five PM." Okay, well, then we'll do whatever the state says we have to do. But let's not kid ourselves that we have to wait until the state issues regulations. We can create our own regulations. There will be no marijuana facilities until those regulations are created anyways. Then we would have the agility to, to respond. And I've heard a few times, there's no, uh, we can change this ordinance at any time, and I've heard that. What I haven't heard is the reason why it's needed now. I know we can change it at any time. But what I'd like to know is, are we taking a vote on a substantive ban of marijuana, or are we just couching it as a procedural ban in order to sit on both sides of the fence? So that we can say to those residents who voted no, "Look, we voted to ban it." And to say to those voted, those residents who voted yes, "Well, we can change it at any time, we're waiting for the state, it's not our fault." I'm generally opposed to taking a middle position like that. I don't see any pressing reason why it has to be delayed, uh, to two years or three years. I don't see any reason why we have to vote no. I don't see any pressing emergency that could come up. There is no way that anybody could open up a marijuana facility. I don't expect, uh, that it's going to take more than twelve to eighteen months for the state to promulgate their rules. In the meantime, we can promulgate our own, and we could be a leader in the state on this issue, and we can come up with our own rules and perhaps even have some influence on what the state's doing. So, you know, I'm gonna vote no, and it will come back for a second reading in two weeks. And, um, I hope, uh, at least one of my colleagues will reconsider, because I, I don't, I don't view any of the reasons given as a reason why we shouldn't, instead, just take the affirmative step of creating an ordinance to regulate where the marijuana establishments can be, how they can operate, and do, and lead the state, rather than waiting for them to tell us what to do. That's what I would like to do.
Mr. Mayor.
And, um, and I think that's, one moment, Mrs. Koski. I think that's, I think that's really all I have. Mrs. Koski?
May we vote?
Oh, yeah.
I, I still have something I wanted to ask.
Okay, uh, Mr. Radke, just briefly, if you could.
I was wondering if Mr. Denault could, could explain the unreasonably impractical standard, which is what this whole recreational marijuana law, uh, is kinda pivoting around for people at home. I think there's a lot of information online, even on the Facebook and everything else, where people are unsure what this means, and I hope to at least get your opinion on it.
Sure. I'll, I'll, uh...
And could you get some background, please?
I'll first read the, the words to you, and, uh, you can all take them for what the words are worth. It means that "The measures necessary to comply with the rules or ordinances adopted pursuant to this act subject licensees to unreasonable risk or require such a high investment of money, time, or any other resource or asset that a reasonably prudent businessperson would not operate the marijuana establishment." What does that mean? That's your question. That's what we're all going to be working through over the next twelve to twenty-four months, trying to understand what, as a community, and what, as a state, can be implemented to regulate without unre, making it unreasonably impracticable for a reasonably prudent businessperson to operate the establishment. It's gonna take some working through.
So, on that point, the state's gonna come up with a, a committee created by this, the executive branch is gonna come up with the rules promulgated, right?
Well, it's actually going through Lara this time. They're not getting as complicated as they did with medical. They're not going to have the advisory committee and the commission, they're just gonna have Lara.
Follow-up question.
Okay, we'll get, I'll get to you, but, so the reasonably impracticable is going to be determined by a state committee? And then what if a, what if a, so then, let's say, the cities adopt whatever is, uh, the state regs are. What stops a business from then suing, saying it's unreasonably impractical, impracticable based on the state regs? Nothing, right?
Right.
So we wouldn't say here, "Well, we're saying, we gotta wait for the state regs." Why not say, "We need to wait for the state regs, then we need to wait to see if there's any court cases that come out over the next four or five years interpreting the state regs. Then we need to see if the state Supreme Court, um, takes those cases. Then we need to see how they're regulated." This is something that's, lawyers know always happens. The rules are constantly changing. Uh, first, like I brought up, First Amendment jurisprudence is constantly changing. You don't say, "Well, we're not going to allow something because we don't know it might change in sometime in the future." It's always going to change. So that, to me, does not provide a valid reason to do a knee-jerk reaction and ban something right now, because we don't know ultimately, ten years from now, what the rules are gonna look like. If we just wait, then we'll never get to the substantive question. Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I guess my follow-up question before I lost the floor was, uh, this impractical standard, has it ever been defined anywhere else in the law or any other state? Is this a unique situation in Michigan, or is it, anyone else used this standard before?
It, it's funny that you would bring that up. I actually looked for it today briefly. I didn't, uh, know that we would get into a, a major discussion of it tonight. Colorado has a similar definition, but it's not identical. Uh, and I haven't looked at the other states yet.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor Taylor?
Yeah, Mrs. Zarco.
Okay. Um, through the chair to Mr. Denault. Can you share what you grow? In other words, you get six friends together, and they say, "You know what? You've got the basement to grow this in, we live in apartments." Can one person grow for the other six?
Mr. Denault?
The answer to that is, as long as the person limits themselves to twelve plants, they can share with anybody they like.
Okay, so then...
Without charging, right?
Without charging, as long as they don't charge money for it.
There's no money, you can't sell it, but they can, they can share it, they can have it, they can gift it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Then presently, the way the law is, can you use marijuana now in a cigar bar or a hookah lounge? Because you are permitted to smoke in both of those places.
Right. So that's an interesting nuance, too. The cigar bars, hookah lounge-type license that you would need is an indoor smoking license from the state of Michigan. They no longer issue new ones, so whatever's out there, it's a finite resource that you can purchase from another business. Those only involve tobacco. So that law does not yet address marijuana use or smoking or the smoke that comes from it or the odors or smells or any other substance, just tobacco at this point because of the tobacco. You know, the basis for that law was basically tobacco is harmful to people's health, so that's why they created that law to protect primarily employees, really, and also members of the public as well. But really, the employees who are in that environment have to breathe the air. But if you have the indoor smoking permit, then like an establishment you mentioned, they could have tobacco smoking. As far as marijuana goes, they can do it if the business owner allows it. Now, it can't be in a public place under this statute, another interesting definition that we'll see evolve over time. Our argument, I think, at this point is that would be open to the public, it'd be available to the public, it's a place where the public can go, so it would be prohibited in a place like that. But time will tell if we're right about that.
Okay. And then through the chair to the chief. As long as you're sitting here, we'll make sure they're going to ask all the questions. How do you test for somebody driving under the influence of marijuana?
Right now, if we believe they're under the influence, we do our sobriety checks. We bring them to the station. Obviously, you know, breathalyzers used for alcohol. We don't have a breathalyzer or an instant test for marijuana right now. It's the holy grail of what law enforcement's looking for. I have no idea how much marijuana you have in your system. I have no idea what you're taking. It could be a combination of one drug, two drugs, three drugs, and alcohol. I have no idea. We do know that you're impaired through our field sobriety tests. We bring you to the station. We would then get a search warrant for your blood. We would take you to a hospital, get a blood draw, wait one, two, three months for the state of Michigan to come back with a full blood panel to tell us what's in your system, the levels of marijuana. And again, I don't even know if that's been dictated about what the level of marijuana in the body that's going to be this predetermined number that's automatically, makes you automatically guilty of driving while under the influence. That's also to be worked out. Right now, I think the law is the active ingredient, the metabolite is any in your blood right now, you're considered under the influence of a drug while driving. And I don't know how that's going to progress over time, but we're really kind of scratching at it right now about how we're going to address what's likely to be more increased. Well, it is for sure through the state of Michigan crash reports, there's been an increase in people driving while under the influence of marijuana and fatal accidents with people with marijuana in their system. And that is through the state of Michigan. You can check the crime stats. It has been increasing every year.
Okay. And then through the chair to Mr. Denault, I've had another question. How does this affect some of the employee/employer guidelines for work?
It does not. Employers have the right to determine that it's not going to happen in their establishments, so it'll be a case-by-case basis. Some employers may like it, some may not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then these are comments. I want to thank Mr. Shannon and also Mayor Taylor for having a difference of opinion but still respecting the rest of us for having a different opinion than your own. I'm not going to sit here, though, and have anybody call me a liar because I'm not. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Anyone else, a final comment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Yes, I too would like to make a comment about, you know, we can agree to disagree up here, but for a colleague to accuse four people that disagree with him to be lying to the public is totally inappropriate and uncalled for. And that same councilperson using speculation as to what a future counsel may do when he called Mr. Denault out on speculation is kind of hypocritical as well. So we've always been very courteous up here to each other, and to be called a liar because I have a difference of opinion is very inappropriate. I have nothing further.
Okay, Mr. Radke.
Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to the chief for one moment. My colleague, Mrs. Zarco, asked you about driving under the influence of marijuana. Marijuana will be legal on December 6th, correct?
Yes.
So you'll be able to buy it and smoke it and use it, correct?
Yes.
So how is us banning these establishments in Sterling Heights going to prevent you from buying, smoking, or using it?
Yeah, the question to me was just how we detect.
Oh, I'm asking you. You can still buy and sell and use it, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
So that really has no bearing on the law that we're considering right now?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Just as a matter of clarification, Mr. Denault, there's no way to buy marijuana, right? I mean, Mr. Radke said buy, smoke, obtain, whatever. But to be clear, there's no way to legally buy marijuana, recreational marijuana unless you have a medical license and you're buying it from a licensed provisioning center, which there are very few of in the entire state. There's no way to buy recreational marijuana, right?
That's absolutely right.
Okay. But you can get it. You can grow it. You can share it and you can... A question I thought of is, is there anything in this act that prohibits you from being under the influence of marijuana in public?
Not under the influence, just consuming it in public. But let me double-check that to be absolutely sure I'm right about that. I lost my page. Consumption in a vehicle is what I'm looking for. That whole list I went through with you guys a minute ago. I apologize for my delays. Can't remember what section number that's in. It's a very long statute.
That's all right. We can probably address that before the next meeting. One other thing, since I've got you. You indicated that there's a possibility of losing federal funding based on this due to the federal prohibition on marijuana. Are you aware of any states where recreational marijuana has been in existence that the federal government has cut CDBG funding or other entitlements to communities that have opted in?
I have not dug that far. As far as I got so far for tonight was just looking at what has happened in other states and the cautionary tales. And I shared some of those with you.
Okay. All right, very good. And Chief, driving under the influence of marijuana is a huge problem. Obviously, one of the main issues is it's very difficult for you to ascertain whether somebody's under the influence of marijuana when they're driving or other drugs for that matter. Do you have any reason to believe that allowing legal establishments to sell marijuana is going to make it harder for you to detect who's driving under the influence of marijuana?
Yeah, I would need a crystal ball. I have no idea what the future looks like depending on how many dispensaries we have or operations.
But would you agree that there's probably little evidence suggesting that if somebody gets their marijuana from the black market or from personally growing it at home or from a licensed, regulated facility, the effect is still the same? It's bad if they're driving with it, right?
Yeah, I can just tell you one thing for sure. The percentage of people driving with it in this system will increases, access to it increases, and the legality of it increases here in a couple of weeks. We're going to see more people driving under the influence. It's all I can really state as fact.
Right, understood.
I have that list if you wanted to.
Sure, go ahead.
Just remind me of your question again. I have the list in front of me.
It was about whether it's legal to be under the influence of marijuana in public. And, you know, consuming marijuana, I mean, you could have a lollipop, a sucker, you could have a brownie, a cookie, you could have all sorts of different ways of ingesting it in detectable ways in public. But, you know, so if I've got two and a half ounces of marijuana on my person, like, that's a question. Do you know, like, do I have two and a half ounces of brownies? Does that constitute two and a half ounces of marijuana? Because the amount of marijuana in the brownie or in the edible is obviously far less than... So how do they even, you know, how do they know that? Do you know what the answer is?
That's the concentrate measurement. Yeah, but how a police officer could ever measure that, I can't imagine unless it's labeled and wrapped.
Okay.
From a dispensary. But the answer to your question is no, it is not prohibited to be under the influence of marijuana in a public place. You cannot consume it or smoke it. But that being said, obviously, we have disorderly conduct ordinances and things in place.
Got you. Okay. I'm ready to call the question if there's not anybody else. So Mrs. Risk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
No.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
No.
Mrs. Saroski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Zarco?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, motion passes four to three. The ordinance is introduced. So we'll go on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on the consent agenda? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Excuse me. Next item on our agenda is to consider nominations to City of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, this is a Board of Review nomination. This is an open seat due to a resignation. This is a council appointment to a term ending June 30th, 2020. Is there anyone who has a...
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Resolved to nominate John Fenn for consideration as an appoint to the Board of Review at the December 4th, 2018 regular city council meeting.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
The Assembly Department recommended him previously. He's interested in the job. Walter Blessed resigned from the jobs. We had to fill it. I think he'll be a great addition. He's a surveyor, I believe, or an assessor.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, council? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider appointments to City of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. This is for, I believe, appointments to the Board of Ordinance Appeals 1 and Board of Ordinance Appeals 1 alternate. Nominations were received two weeks ago for Kathleen Martin and Brad Lucas for the alternate position. Is there anyone who'd like to make the first motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Shannon?
I resolved to appoint Kathleen Martin to the Board of Ordinance Appeals 1 to a term ending June 30th, 2019, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter Section 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion on this item?
Nope.
With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There is a second suggested action for Brad Lucas. Is there anyone who'd like to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Resolved to appoint Brad Lucas to the Board of Ordinance Appeals 1, alternate member to a term ending June 30th, 2019, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter Section 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Mr. Lucas already sits on the Board of Ordinance Appeals 2 as an alternate member. He'd only participate in meetings when they needed a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of the agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? I'll start with Mr. McGregor.
So before I get started, I don't want to get called out of order, so I just want to check with you. I can talk about people growing marijuana at their home because that's not part of the prohibition, correct?
Well, yeah, so we talked tonight about an ordinance prohibiting marijuana establishments. So I would say that that's germane and it's not directly related to the topic we already discussed.
Thank you. So...
I just would caution you against using it as an argument, as I did, for why we shouldn't prohibit recreational facilities. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's...
Because then you would be venturing into...
That's questionable territory, correct?
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention to the sitting members of council that, you know, I live in a trailer park, Sterling Estates, within this city. Marijuana is a huge issue along with other drugs in that trailer park and also in Ruddgate Manor, which is also another trailer park within the city. And I just wanted to tell you guys that, you know, it's probably not exactly the greatest to have people growing at home. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Juddnick?
Good evening, council. It's been a while. I'm informed, keeping watch of council meetings at home. I want to first, talking to Mr. Vanderpool. I was here in August and I was talking about Merrill Road. The condition is deplorable. Council, we have the worst road in Macomb County called Merrill Road. It runs for a mile and a half. I don't know if any of you have ever driven down there, but it's terrible. It's a public safety hazard. After that meeting, Mr. Vanderpool, I got a call from Mr. Castor. He said that you instructed him to call me and that VPW was going to get on Merrill Road within two weeks. Well, that was three months ago. Now, we've had our first freeze thaw condition, and now, council, drive down Merrill Road, you're going to start seeing asphalt where the patches over the years have popped up. I'm not, you know, I'm not down here because I live there. I'm down here because thousands of residents use Merrill Road every day. And they use that road to cut down nineteen and a half mile road to get to Van Dyke, to take Riverland, to get to their homes. So I'm not the only one. So, council, if you're heading south on Merrill Road from Hall Road, you have Catalpa, Poplar, Higgins, Mulberry, Cotter, and Burrows. Those roads where they intersect with Merrill Road, those roads have completely failed. Semi-trucks drive down the middle of Merrill Road because if they drive south on Merrill Road, their shit, whatever they have in their trucks they're loading is going to shift back and forth. I don't know why you had Mr. Castor call me if you weren't going to keep your word, but I don't want patch thrown on there. I want you to send out one of those trucks with the ash, with the liquid, black top and the gravel, and I want that thing sprayed. When you get to Nineteen Mile and Merrill, there's a steel cover that's up about two to three inches now. That road is completely failing right at the traffic light. If you hit that, you will have to buy a new rim. And if I hit that, I'll be back here expecting to be reimbursed. I'm giving you guys, you call it a threat, it's not a threat. I'll sue the city. You have a responsibility, Mr. Vanderpool, to fix that road in a temporary condition like they fixed Mound Road in a temporary. They're going to rip that out now for 214 million, but it's beautiful. I'm not asking you to blacktop it. I'm asking you to patch it until next spring so we're not going to have to dodge potholes all winter. I hear about tax revenue with this marijuana. What is, let's bring brothels into Sterling Heights. What is wrong with a man going to a brothel and paying to have sex? Or a woman to go to a brothel and pay to have sex? Or a man to go to an entertainment club with his wife or with his girlfriend or by himself and have a nice steak dinner and a drink? That's all, could all be taxed also. So you're looking for revenue. That's just a red herring, in my opinion. I applaud the four councilwomen, and I hope if this comes back again for another vote that the attorney mayor of ours that was long-winded tonight, I hope that he doesn't persuade he doesn't persuade you in any way to change your vote. So I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and if something comes up again, I'll see you. But again, counsel, please get on your administration and tell them to patch Merrill Road up so the residents can at least drive down there to get to their houses. And thank you very much and good night.
All right, thank you, Mr. Juddnick. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
I'm going to be real quick. I just got two questions from Mark Vanderpool, pretty simple questions. Are they going to have skate rental at the ice skating rink? And the second question is the on-demand snow and lawn guru, how much is that a free service or how much does that service cost? And then I just want to address, you know, I, it was a pretty long debate today and I appreciate everyone on the council. I just want to remind some of the council members that they are up for reelection next year and the voters that did vote for certain things that are not being upheld, we'll remember that come next year. Thanks.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else under Communications from Citizens? Not, close that portion. All right, a couple of things, Mr. Vanderpool. Skate rental is a yes. There will be skates available for rent. If you could explain lawn guru and also if you could, during your comments, address the appointment process. Now that we know Mr. Shannon has been elected and is State Representative-elect, there will be the potential for an appointment coming up. If you could outline for the council's benefits what our options are so that we can prepare going into the holiday season. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. First, lawn guru is an on-demand service. You can download the app. The prices vary depending on the square footage of the driveway, so it could be anywhere from 35 to $55, really just depends on the size. You can also outline on the app whether or not you want your sidewalks cleared. Some may not want that done. They may prefer to do it on their own and even the walkways that go up to the house. So there are ways to kind of narrow down the scope so that it's at least expensive. Yes, skate, skate rental, as the mayor mentioned. Merrill Road is going to be resurfaced next year. It's scheduled and funded, and the interim will continue to look at it and make necessary repairs as required. Mayor, as you mentioned, there is an imminent vacancy on the City Council. In the past, I've outlined the process for appointment by charter. The City Council is required to make an appointment within 60 days of the effective vacancy date, which in this case would be March 2nd, assuming a vacancy of December 31st. In the past, the City Council has agreed upon a process by, by which we would advertise a date and which individuals that are interested would submit their letters of interest, if you will, and attach resume if they so choose. And then they can appear before the City Council at a date certain and make a presentation, after which City Council would consider those individuals and then at a future meeting date, make an appointment. So with all that in mind, I've come up with three options. I'll bring them up on the screen if City Council would like. And I'd like to just remind counsel, you certainly don't have to use this process. You haven't always used a process like this. This is really just a guide for you to consider, but it's council's prerogative to choose whatever process you want to use for, for the appointment. So recognizing that we're upon the holiday season here, I, I thought it'd be prudent to outline three reasonable options for you to give us some direction on this evening. So first, let me talk about option one, which is really the most expeditious option. In this particular case, letters of interest would be due, well, first, we'd advertise on November 27th. Letters of interest would be due December 14th, which gives the candidates, prospective candidates, two and a half weeks from the advertised date to make a decision on whether or not to submit their letter of interest. And then presentations would be held at the December 18th City Council Meeting with an appointment then scheduled for the January 2nd meeting. So the presentation of December 18th would be three weeks from the advertised date. Option two is really just, basically, option two and three are adding a couple of weeks to the process. On option two, the presentations would be held on January 2nd with appointment on January 15th. So that, that's just a couple of weeks longer. The advantage to options one and two is that the appointment would occur before strategic planning, which is desirable, desirable, but it's certainly not a requirement for City Council. And then option three is the most deliberate, I suppose you could say, and, and time-consuming of the three options. This option addresses, well, just provides more time. So it's pretty straightforward. We would have the deadline date of December 28th. The presentation then would be on January 15th, the appointment on February 5th, and then the swearing-in on the 19th. Now, the problem with the third option is you really have to have the vacancy filled by March 2nd, so it really doesn't give you much wiggle room in terms of, you know, if you feel you need another meeting or two or a little more time, you're really kind of bumping up against the charter limit. You don't have that concern in option one or two. Option one is advantageous from perhaps an applicant's vantage point because there, there's, it can't, I would imagine it would be a somewhat of a stressful process for an applicant to go through. They wouldn't have to straddle the holidays. They wouldn't have to worry about a presentation coming up before the holidays. It would all be done by that time. So that, that's just a very rough overview of the three options you have available. Of course, there's some modification of any one of the options. And all we request this evening, mayors, that we be given some direction and consensus because there are obviously some advertising dates that we would want to hit, hit to meet any one of the options.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. And anything else tonight?
Nothing further.
Okay, Mr. Kajupski, anything?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, counsel, I'll open it up. It sounds like the administration would like some direction because we're going to be hopefully publishing a notice or not on November 27th, one way or the other. So what I'd like to do is kind of open it up for a discussion about that first, and then if you have any reports or any other business that you'd like to bring up, maybe we can separate the two, if that's without any objection. So does anyone have any comment on the, the three proposals?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
I'm open for option one.
Okay, anyone else? We'll put one...
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shannon.
Should I do any sort of like recusing myself from this?
No, weigh in. I don't care. We're here.
Honestly, it's really up to you, so.
You weighed in on marijuana. Go ahead, if you have any thoughts.
Option one seems fine to me. I mean...
He hasn't resigned yet.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that... Figure a presentation for...
Vote counts. Okay, we got two for one. Mrs. Zarco.
I would say that we've let people know tonight that we're going to be accepting applications, so the formal application will start on November 27th, but we could actually, people know today that we're going to be accepting applications. So it gives them a little longer even, if they're watching.
Well, yeah, if they're watching, they should know that.
Or it goes on the website tomorrow and then we do whatever we have to do on the 27th.
So, so one, two, three, or none, which is...
One.
One, okay. All right, we're getting close. Mrs. Zarowski.
And I also agree with number one.
Can we pull one back, or can we pull those options back up, if you don't mind?
Sure.
It looks like we have consensus around one. Is there anyone with strong feelings against number one? Option one?
I guess the one thing I would say is I agree with option one, but it's also hard for Mr. Shannon to sit up here and look at his possible, I feel, I feel for you. I don't know what the, the answer is for that.
You should be very happy.
Yeah.
I'll be okay with it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand your, I understand your...
We can't put on it until he leaves, literally, by law.
We won't, but...
Yeah, it's kind of a weird situation.
It will be, yeah. You're right.
Okay. So, anyone, Mrs. Schmidt, any strong feelings one way or the other? Because I think we've got, we've got direction. It's going to be quick and abbreviated, but that's fine. And it'll, it'll make for, you know, an interesting next few weeks. So, all right, I think you've got your direction there. I'll now open it up to counsel for any reports or new business, anything that you'd like to talk about. Mrs. Zarowski.
I'll jump in first. Okay, so first things first on my personal comments, as I have to wish a happy birthday to my husband. Today is his birthday. I am not with the rest of the family, who's all in from out of town except for Spartan. He's still hopefully testing and doing well. But I wanted to wish him a happy birthday. I won't tell you his age. You would prefer I don't. He's getting old. And number two, yes, I do want to encourage our administration to aggressively repair Merrill Road as best we can because I, I do drive up and down and I drive all over the city. And it's, last thing we need is another issue like mound, which I must say is beautiful. Just drove it today again and just was happy as a clam. But most importantly, I do want to, I, I held off saying anything, but I do want to echo some of my councilmembers. Not, I'm not angry, but frustration at being called a liar because I am not. And the one thing that we do, that we have to remember to do as councilmembers is to, one, be civil and be kind, at least in the public. And if we have differences, we can speak privately. So I do, I just want to say that, no, I'm not lying to you. I do want to revisit it. I think, and I also want to revisit something which we tabled, which is the medical, because that is something that we have good guidance on and that we need to really address now that we have a, a, a direction from the voters as to where they are going. We waited on medical until we heard what the state had, you know, what went through with the vote. That was the reason that we tabled marijuana, medical marijuana in the first place. Now we can revisit it. Just because we're enacting an ordinance to hold off doesn't mean, and trust me, I'm really, and I know Mrs. Zarco, I think that we can make a statement here tonight to tell you, we will revisit it once we get guidelines. We're not going to just say, no, no, no establishments. It's just, I think it's prudent government and it's prudence that we need to be, to, to show tonight. Our job is to enact ordinances to support how, how we allow the state laws to come through in our city. So that's what I'm doing. And that is that for me.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Radke.
You know, I, I want to apologize, you know, because I used the word liar and I should have used disingenuous. You know, I think that some of the arguments made are disingenuous because they're not what the real heart of the issue is. And, you know, we get heated up here and we say things we don't mean, so I want to apologize to my colleagues because, you know what, I did not mean that and I'm very sorry. But at the same time, I also want to say that some of the comments elicited out here show you where people stand on this issue. It's not about establishments in our city. It's about, they dislike cannabis. They dislike marijuana. I dislike marijuana, but I know that what the law is going to be, and that's why I choose to vote the way I do. And the idea that we're going to re-approach this in the future...
Excuse me, Mayor, wasn't that an agenda item?
Yeah, I think, I know, I gave Mrs. Zarowski a little leeway.
I apologize, thank you.
And if we want to address some personal accusations, I'll give you leeway for that, but let's, let's try not to go back. We, we'll be back in two...
That's fine.
...two weeks on the medical.
All I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else? Mrs. Zarco.
Well, first of all, for Mr. Juddnick and I to agree on two issues in one night, when two issues in probably five years is miraculous in itself. But the one thing I will say is Merrill Road, Merrill Road has been a mess for a long time. You've been coming here, I've been driving it, I know what you're talking about. But the other thing is, is because what you mentioned is the huge trucks that are on Merrill Road all the time because one side's residential and the other side's industrial, that maybe we should look into weight limits on Merrill Road or we need to do something else besides what we're already doing to repair it and so that it can withstand the weight of these trucks. So if we could look into that, I'd really appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Anyone else tonight? Mrs. Kosky.
I will echo that instructions. Mr. Vanderpool, please. Merrill Road, number one on your list. Also, I have a question. I was at the dispatch center over there in Mount Clemens and they made a comment that they're going to be taking over Sterling Heights' sirens. Is that correct or did I misunderstand?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Kosky, that's correct. They, they would activate the sirens if there is weather conditions that warrant such or conditions that they're aware of wherein county-wide activation might be required. We also have the ability to activate them as well, but they would be the lead on it, which makes prudent sense, you know, knowing the sophistication of their equipment and monitoring and cameras and, and so on and so forth. But they would always be in direct communication with our police department when any such activation is about to be made.
We will still be able to activate them ourselves, though.
Yes, we could.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, counsel? No? Okay, a few things. First and foremost, I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving coming up and, and I know I'm looking forward to that myself. Another celebration we have is Sterling Christmas. That's going to be on Saturday. Is it December 1st? December 1st, is that right? I think at 4:45, we're going to be dedicating the new ice skating rink at Dodge Park, so that should be an exciting event and Sterling Christmas to follow, just like every year. So I hope you'll make it out for that. I want to also plug a coat drive that's going on that was recently launched. I got a call from Supervisor Rick Stathakis in Shelby Township recently and asked if we would consider partnering with the City of Utica and Shelby Township, Utica Community Schools, and a company called Grupo Antolin, which is the largest employer in the City of Shelby, in the township of Shelby. It's on 24 Mile Road and I think it's called Shelby Parkway there. They've got a nice, a beautiful facility and their general manager was looking to do something to give back to the community. They have a presence in Sterling Heights as well. So they came up with an idea and graciously invited the City of Sterling Heights to participate and be a part of it. And what we're looking for is new coats, new gloves, and new hats to be donated, and they will be collected by the City of Sterling Heights, by Utica, and by Shelby Township, and then they will be given to Utica Community Schools to distribute to families that are in need for children who need their, who need coats. So we're looking to collect those coats up until January 4th, and there'll be drop-off centers here at Sterling Heights City Hall, at the Public Library, at Fire Station Number Five, at the DPW Building, at Parks and Rec, and not sure if I'm forgetting any...
Library.
The library, if I didn't say it. So if you have the ability to contribute and donate, please consider that. What I think I'm going to do is I have three kids and luckily my kids are not in need of winter coats. I have the ability to provide for them, but not a lot of parents do. A lot of times, parents might be using coats that are too small or that are torn or tattered. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to buy three coats, just like I did for my three kids this year, and, and contribute those. If you have the ability to do it, I would encourage you to do that as well. I know your, your budget gets stretched pretty thin at this time of year, but it's a good cause, and we're hoping to make this an annual event to help out the children of Sterling Heights and the Utica Community School District. One thing that I guess I, I should ask, but I don't, I hope it's not going to be an issue. The company, Antolin, has a large trailer that they're going to put signage and banners on and everything, and we'd like, I'd like to have them make the Sterling Christmas a drop-off point. So if, if I could, is there any objection, Mr. Vanderpool? Would they have, either they could park it here at City Hall or somewhere where they could just advert, if nothing more, it's an advertisement, but, but I think you guys should be able to work out the logistics on that, right?
That's correct, Mayor. There's a lot of times when we have governmental signs, if you will, that are put up temporarily. We have a banner now out by the Upton House. We just have to figure out logistics on...
Well, I think they're going to have, they want to have a box truck here that, that they have the sign on it that says, you know, coats for kids, advertising it. And, and, you know, if people want to bring them to Sterling Christmas, they might have the ability to, so we'll work out the logistics on that. But if you can, if you can help with that, we'd greatly appreciate it. And one final thing, not to belabor this issue, but we talked about recreational marijuana today, and as Mrs. Zarowski pointed out, medical marijuana has been something that is, been around for quite some time, and the rules that were promulgated by the state a couple of years ago have finally gone into effect and they're finally starting to grant licenses. And one of the things we've said consistently as a council is that we're going to wait and see what happens here with recreational marijuana, and we've done that. And I don't see any reason why we can't proceed on medical marijuana. All of the arguments against recreational I heard today is that we need to wait for rules to know what we can do. So I think it's time that we have that discussion. I think it's time that the administration brings it forward. We've had a public forum. We've had the opportunity for this, the city to weigh in. Now I think it's time for them to do that in a much more formal way. I think it's time to consider whether we're going to opt in, whether we're going to opt out, and if we're going to opt in, I think it's time to come up with an ordinance. So I would like to see the city administration come forward with something in the next 60 to 90 days, if possible, to bring for our consideration and at least update us on what the process is, is going to be to get an ordinance that would either allow for grow operations or for provisioning centers or testing facilities, because as I said, we, we know what those rules are. So if really what we are waiting for is rules on, on, on rec, we got those rules on medical. There's nothing hanging out there for us to see with a recreational ballot. And one final thing I would point out, that this was passed by the voters in 2008, medical marijuana. this was passed by the voters in 2008, uh, medical marijuana. I looked at the state numbers or the city's numbers. It passed in Sterling Heights with 60.5% of the vote. Um, even amongst absentee voters, it passed with over 50% of the vote. Uh, by contrast, Prop 1, the recreational marijuana, uh, only 38.6% of AV voters voted in favor of recreational marijuana, but over 50% voted in favor of medical marijuana and six, almost 61%. And that was 10 years ago. So I think there's strong, uh, sentiment that, that this should be, uh, regulated. It should be, uh, accessible and it should be something that our patients here in Sterling Heights don't have to travel out of town for. So I'd like to see that brought forward unless there's any objection from my colleagues. And like I said, we're just talking about bringing it to the table for a bigger, a, a more formal discussion. And unless, unless there's any objection, I'd like the council, the administration to bring that forward. And without any further discussion, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
The move and supported. No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.